Time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Brockton City Council to order. Will you please rise to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, item number one.
Acceptance of the minutes of the February 27th, 2023 City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed down file. Counselor DiAgostino.
Madam President, I make a motion that we take item number two under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, the motion passes.
Item number two, we have the appointments of the following. Cedric M. Carter of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Sebastian Charles of Fall River, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Brandon Conrad of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Jason DePina of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Zachary Duquette of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Patrick D. Mahoney of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Amy R. Maloney of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Miles J. McKinnon of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Christopher L. Miranda of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Ted R. Moyes of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Blake R. Phelan of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Jase T. Ribero of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Eric M. Rivera of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Crystal M. Roach of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Joseph A. Sylvia of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Shay M. Ivanador of Brockton, Mass. to the rank of firefighter in the Brockton Fire Department. Question is on...
Question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
DiAgostino.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Matter is approved.
I believe they're all here, if you want to have them stand.
Gentlemen, please stand.
And ladies.
And ladies.
Madam President, I'd like to take item 43 out of order and act on it this evening.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries.
Item number 43 ordered that the following names' sum be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows. Transfer of $300,000 from Human Resources Employee Benefits Contractual Union Costs to Fire Department Personal Services Other Than Overtime for the purposes of funding the firefighter's local 144 contract. This provides funding for the first year of a three-year contract, July 1st, 2022 through June 30, 2025, in City Council, February 13th, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
DiAgostino.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, the order is adopted.
Motion to reconsider in hoping that it fails.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to reconsider in hopes that it fails. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will take a brief recess. Thank you. At this time, we'll resume our meeting. Mr. Clerk, item number three.
Item number three, petition of Javard Mamador of Green Lighting Management, 85 Dimick Street, Quincy, for a license to solicit in Canvas, in City Clerk's Office, February 17th, 2023. Hearing assigned for March 13th, 2023. All paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor?
Is it Mr. Mamador?
Come to the podium.
Yes, my name is Stan Yusevich, I'm with Verizon State Government Affairs with offices at 65 High Street in Danvers. The petition is on behalf of Verizon, door-to-door solicitation. I have with us tonight Catherine DePelto...
DePelto.
DePelto, I'm sorry Catherine, who is the manager of the program as well as the petitioner, the owner of the company that will be doing work door-to-door for Verizon. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like Catherine just to give a quick overview of what we're intending to do, if that's all right with you, Madam President.
Excuse me, if I can just check, Diane, did you get his name and address?
No.
I will, I'll give you a card.
Okay.
Hi, it's Catherine DePelto. I am with Verizon and we are super excited to bring our FiOS product to you. Obviously, many of you have had Verizon Wireless for years, but fiber is new in your area. It's been a long time coming. We've knocked in all of the people around you, but we are finally here, so we're excited to bring that product to you. What we do is, we have digital leads that we provide to our vendor partner. All of those are scrubbed, so anybody that signs up for Do Not Solicit, we certainly don't go there. Anybody that already has the product, we don't go there. We are a well-oiled machine. We exist throughout Massachusetts and we are fully signed off by your police department. They've already done background checks, they've already signed off on that for us. And basically, what we're here to do is, basically, we just help your constituents sign up. The process itself is very, it's touchless. It's, we don't go in any of your customers' homes. Everything is, Javard and his team have tablets that are distributed by Verizon and basically, everything is done, the customer doesn't go even touch the tablet, they use their own phone to sign up and so everything is completely sanitary, it's completely, you know, there's no, there's no kind of, any issues at all. But we are excited to be with you this evening. I'll let Javard speak just for a moment, if that's okay, just on the hours that they work and things like that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mam...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Javard, I'm the owner of the company that is authorized vendor on behalf of Verizon. We've been doing these services in the neighboring towns such as Randolph, Rain Tree, and now, as Catherine said, we're very excited to be here in Brockton as well. We've seen a lot of success in other towns, neighboring towns. We also recently partnered up with the government, we give away affordable connectivity program, which means pretty much people who are on any sort of government benefits, we're giving away very discounted or maybe even free Wi-Fi for those residents. So that's something we're very, very excited about. And as Catherine said, we're very compliant when it comes to, you know, we carry masks with us in case a customer, you know, is not comfortable with us being face-to-face, we obviously wear a mask. Everything is done on our tablet, we don't touch customers' equipment or phones or anything like that, so everything is done by compliance rules.
Thank you. And I'm wondering, do you only call on existing Verizon customers or will you also call on Comcast and other carrier customers?
Yeah, so we only deal with new customers. So existing Verizon customers, we do not, you know, interact with them, they're not on our list. On our list are only non-Verizon customers.
Okay. And how soon will FiOS be up and running in the city of Brockton?
It's already up and running, we just haven't obviously done any of our services yet, but FiOS is already up and running in Brockton.
Okay.
The construction build on it, the majority is already done, but the build will continue over the next year. So Javard will do one sweep through and then what happens is that, as more, you, depending on the part of Brockton that you live in, it might not be available to you now, but it will be by the end of the year. So they'll just keep coming back as new opens, is what we call them, come through to help you sign up, if that's what you want to do.
Okay. Counselors, any questions? Counselor Farwell.
Just very quickly, days of the week and hours of the day when you'll be canvassing?
So, we work Monday to Friday, the hours are 2 to 6.
2 to 6?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor DiAgostino.
Couple, couple of questions. I just wanted to clarify, so this is wired FiOS, like fiber?
Correct.
That is correct. So you can use it as a Wi-Fi product, but we are going to wire it directly to your home. So different than your cable options, which comes to a hub in your neighborhood, instead, we go directly to your home. And that's why you get upload-download speeds the same. So maybe our competitors can say that you get a gig, but that's only, that's only download. We have upload a gig, download a gig, that's the difference between us.
Okay, all right. Well, and I do want to say, and I, you know, with due respect to Comcast and, you know, we've had them in the city for years, however, I mean, I have to compete in my industry, there should be no difference, so I welcome a competitive option for constituents. I literally just had somebody asking me about this last week. So, and will this be available to residential customers only or business customers as well?
It's available to both. For our particular teams, we only do residence, but we also have business counterparts and you'll probably see them come before you in the next couple of weeks or so.
Okay. And I wanted to clarify, when you said you're going to do one round, that stuck out to me, because one of my questions was, how many times are you going to hit the same house? Because I hear about the solar people all the time, I'm sure I'm not the only one who's gotten calls about the, the solar people over and over and over.
We're not like that, I can assure you. Javard has a lot of territory, so as much as he'd love to come by over and over, he just doesn't have that bandwidth. So normally, what they do is, when I say they do a round, we supply them with the leads that are available to them and then once they complete that, and what they do is, as they go and they knock, et cetera, if you're, if anyone says, "Take me off your list," it's a, there's a disposition for that and it automatically gets taken out, so he'd never go back to it again. If a customer gets it, again, that's updatet. So he wouldn't come back probably for three months. I'd say it's probably quarterly, if you're lucky.
Three to six months.
Because it's, that's just how busy we are.
Right. But anybody who says, "Listen, I'm not interested, you're going to take them off, you're not going to bother them again," perfect. I think that will, people will be appreciative of that, because...
Yeah. One last thing that we do as well is that, we also work with any, what we call MDUs, multi-dwelling units. So when I parked today, I saw one next to me there. We work with property managers that invite us in to have, instead of Javard going, knocking, say, within certain MDUs, we actually work with the property manager and we bring, we supply for them. Javard and his team would be there with refreshments and helps clients sign up right then and there. So sometimes, we invite them down to the lobby, the, you know, the, you know, rumpus room, whatever that it's called. So we do kind of a combination of things, but we never do that without a property manager's approval.
Okay. And my final question, because I've gotten asked this, if somebody who is watching this doesn't want to wait for you to knock on their door, what would they do?
They can call in or sign up online, either way. Why Javard and his team are so popular is because when you go online, especially a certain clientele, that when they go online, it's, let's face it, it's hard to do. You're not quite sure what you're signing up for, which are the speeds, et cetera. If you call in, you have to deal with the voice response system, press one for this, two for that, et cetera.
Right.
It's frustration, so those are on the, you know, those are available to them, but that's why Javard and his team, people beg us to come out, because they literally help people walk through the process of signing up and do it on their tablets. And what it does for them as well is the fact that, just like when you're shopping online and you get a shopping cart afterwards and you get an email that says what you got, that's exactly what happens. When Javard and his team send the order through, the customer gets an automated response that describes everything to them, what they signed up for, what their bill is going to be, what their first bill is going to look like, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Great, great. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Folks, hello. My question is, we tried this a few years ago, we actually, city government had petitioned Verizon to come into the city to do this. They wanted to come, but basically cherry picked the city. You know, only certain sides of the city, and to be honest with you, it was the west side of the city that they were interested in providing this service to. So my question to you is, one, is this service citywide and basically given to any resident of the city, or is it just going to be, again, cherry picked only certain sides of the city?
And, and, thank you, sir. We, was it us that you're saying did that? Because we've never been here.
Verizon.
What was it?
Verizon.
We are new to, we're, we have never had the service, we're, we're brand new, we've had it maybe two months in...
I'm not saying you in particular, but I'm talking about Verizon as a company, because we have Comcast and we were looking to give our residents a choice or an option, but that option was not available citywide at the time. That Verizon was only interested in doing the west side of Brockton, not necessarily the entire city. So my question to you now is that this service will be made available to the entire city, not looking at one side or the other?
That's correct. It is a internet service and I think what you're describing, the question that was asked earlier was, or that you had alluded to, was a FiOS product, television, a package bundle of cable TV. We will not be offering that in this package. That was something that was discussed with the city some time ago, but clearly, this product is internet service, internet and phone service over fiber optic, and it will be built out throughout the entire city.
And my other question is, at least with Comcast, the package that we get through Comcast, they are required to pay a percentage of their license fees to the city. So with your product, what's in it for the city, besides what the residents would get?
There is no license required for this, because it is not a cable franchise that we're seeking. We're changing out our copper network to fiber and as a result, this product is available to, to residents of Brockton. And at some point, there will be a retirement of the copper network. And so this is really driven by engineering, if you will, the need to upgrade the services. And as a result, again, we can offer this internet service and telephone service to residents of Brockton.
So when you, when you talk about canvassing, you're basically looking at Canvas throughout Brockton? Because I want to make sure that that is, because I think there's still the pains and suffering from the days of asking Verizon to do this is still fresh in some of our minds, but you're actually going to make this available throughout the city, no matter what sides or section of the city?
That's correct, but it will take us some time to build it out.
Okay. Madam President.
Counselor Tavares.
Right. So our internet prices start from $49.99, that's our residential speed internet, at 300 over 300 megabits per second. And also, we also have the variety of 500, which is our middle-tier speed, and our highest one, which is, which is our most popular one, which is the gigabit connection. It's 1,000 over 1,000 megabits per second. Currently, we do not provide traditional cable, but nowadays, there's so many alternatives to it, such as YouTube TV, Hulu TV, Sling, so, and 90% of the sales we do outside of Brockton, obviously, they're Wi-Fi only anyway. So we do provide alternative to cable, but in terms of Wi-Fi, we do have different packages and varieties, yes.
So people can call up, make arrangements through, do you have the telephone number, the contact information, so that we can post it and...
Counselor Minicello. At this time, we're entertaining a license to solicit in Canvas. Maybe at the end of the hearing, you can see the gentleman? Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay? Is there anyone else here in favor? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? Okay? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. So the question comes on granting the license by a hand vote. All in favor? Okay? All opposed? Thank you, it carries. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Item number four, petition of Caleb Ormont of Green Lighting Management, 176 Manthorne Road, West Roxbury, Mass. for a license to solicit in Canvas, in City Clerk's Office, February 17th, 2023. Hearing assigned for March 13th, 2023. All paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? So please give your name and address to the clerk. Is Caleb Ormont here?
Is this the second petition?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, this is the same company.
Right.
Same set of circumstances. The president of the company is here.
Just give us your name again.
Stan Yusevich, with State Government Affairs, Verizon, with offices at 63 High Street in Danvers.
Okay, thank you. And is, is Mr. Ormont here?
Mr. Ormont is not here, but I'm the owner and the manager of the company. The solicitation permits were for myself and Mr. Ormont as well, so I'm on behalf of both of us.
Okay. Just a moment. Can I hold a hearing without the applicant?
That's at the will of the, you can, you can hold a hearing, it's at the will of the council whether they'd like to postpone and get Mr. Ormont here. Just so you understand, the license we just voted on is for you specifically. I think we spoke, spoke about that, and Mr. Ormont would need his own license specifically. In other words, it doesn't go to Green Lighting Management, green lining, excuse me, the license they just voted on is for you, Mr. Mamador, and this license would be for Mr. Ormont. So again, you may hold a hearing, the, it's the will of the council whether they'd want to pass it tonight or see Mr. Ormont.
Okay, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So I understand there are certain background checks and certain qualifications that are required, so could you comment on that?
The police do all the paperwork, have passed everything, have done the background checks and have sent the, the first step for these applications is the police department, they actually approve, send them to us and then goes on the...
And so all those checks came back okay?
All paperwork is on file, approved by the, by the police department, yes.
Understood. I mean, I have no problem if the police background checks have, have cleared, you vouch for the guy, I would have no problem moving forward if that's the will of the council.
All right. Counselors, at this time, would you like to go forward with the hearing without the applicant present? Do I, do I have a motion?
Motion to grant.
Okay.
Second.
Actually, the hearing's still open, so...
Yeah, the hearing is still open, so we will, all in favor proceeding with this hearing? All opposed? Okay. So there are two opposed, so it carries and we will go forward.
Three opposed.
Three opposed, okay, I apologize. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to say regarding Mr. Ormont's application?
Just to add that, Mr. Ormont has been with us for about four months now, four or five months now, has been an employee in the, at Green Lighting Management. Accessing his records, he has no complaints about, from any customer, his cancellation rate is one of the lowest in the office, his approval rating from the customer is above 90%, so I wouldn't recommend him if he wasn't there.
And why hasn't he joined us here this evening?
Because of the appointments he had, sales-related.
Okay, all right. All right. Anyone have any questions? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here in favor? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? All right? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. All right? The question comes to granting the license to Caleb Ormont by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? One, two, three. Okay, three opposed. It carries. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, number five.
Item number five, petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., proposing to install one JO pole on Christie Drive, beginning at a point approximately zero feet west of the center line of the intersection of Christie Place and Christie Drive and continuing approximately 150 feet in a west direction, installing one pole needed for voltage monitoring. In City Clerk's Office, February 17th, 2023. Hearing assigned for March 13th, 2023. All paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? So state your name and address to the clerk.
Name's Jared Aker from the offices at 100...
Pardon?
Sorry.
Thank you.
The offices of 100 East Ashland Street in Brockton. This is for a capacitor bank, which is just going to improve system reliability, is what this pole's for. And you're accurate, it's going to be on the corner of Christie's Place and Christie Drive.
Are there any questions? No? Okay. Is there anyone else here in favor? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. So the question comes on granting by a hand vote. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item six, we have the report of the planning board for its meeting of February 7th, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the report of the finance committee for its meeting of February 21st, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the report of the finance committee for its meeting of March 6th, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the report of the ad hoc committee on the length of terms of the mayor and the city council.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with revised ordinances of the city of Brockton, Chapter 2, Section 2-186, reappointing Karen A. Fisher to the position of senior assistant solicitor full-time for a three-year term effective March 10th, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor informing the city council that Francis Gurley of Pearl Street, Brockton, is resigning as a member of the Cemetery Board of Trustees effective February 20th, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the fire chief informing the city council that they have selected 16 candidates for appointment to the Brockton Fire Department. These candidates were found suitable for a public safety position with the Brockton Fire Department.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending the tax increment exemption agreement between the city and CMK Development Partners for the property located at 137 Main Street.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending the tax increment exemption agreement between the city and 380 Quincy Street LLC for the property located at 380 Quincy Street.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the grant, congressionally-directed spending, in the amount of $3 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 23 Community Project Funding Grant to the Finance Department Fiscal Year 23 Community Project Funding Grant Fund. The grant, congressionally-directed spending funds will be used to upgrade the Lawrence R. Cosgrove Memorial Pool.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the emergency management director requesting acceptance We have a communication from the Emergency Management Director requesting acceptance and expenditure of Fiscal Year 2022 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, in the amount of $51,480. No match is required. This funding will be used to purchase a vehicle trailer, light tower, and generator.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the amount of $2 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 23 Healthy Homes Production Grant Program, HHP, to the Brockton Redevelopment Authority Fiscal Year 23 Healthy Homes Production Grant Program Fund. The Brockton Redevelopment Authority Agency intends on using these funds to provide financial assistance for moderate to low-income families to improve their living space such as the mediation of lead, asbestos, air quality, mercury, asthma, mold, and mildew. This grant requires a 10% match that will be funded from the Community Development Block Grant Program CDBG funds.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Unfinished business. We have an ordinance amending Article 3, Section 2-146, compensation. School committee members elected by ward is hereby amended by striking the words $5,000 and inserting in its place $15,000. The language, the amendment shall be effective January 1, 2018, shall be amended to reflect the new effective date of January 1, 2024. In city council, October 24, 2022. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable. In city council, February 27, 2022. Passed with a third reading by a hand vote.
The question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained.
Item 26, ordinance, an ordinance amending Article 2, Section 2-91 entitled Committees Generally by creating a city council subcommittee for the Committee on Economic Development. In city council, January 11, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable. In city council, February 27, 2022. Passed with a third reading by a hand vote.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Madam President, I actually have submitted an amendment to this ordinance that it's in the possession of our clerk, and I would like to make a motion to accept the amendment. And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries.
So the amendment crosses out the term use of members and changes it to five counselors, and it strikes out the following language. The committee shall review economic development initiative grants, applications, pendings filed, potential development projects, and report to the council on such matter. Also striking out, the committee shall receive a written quarterly report from the Director of Planning and Economic Development on department activities, notwithstanding the provisions of any other ordinances. And then this is what the ordinance would read as adopted, if the amendment carries. Section G, Committee on Economic Development, consists of five counselors to consider matters pertaining to economic development. The committee shall meet monthly, and the committee may meet at additional times at the call of the chair. And there's a further amendment that Article 5, Department of Planning and Economic Development, Section 17-152 Director, shall be amended under Section C, Powers and Duties, to include subsection 18, which shall state, 18, to act as the clerk of the Standing Committee on Economic Development, so that the planning and economic development position is the clerk of the committee.
Counselors, questions on the amendment?
Question is on the amendment, then.
Yeah. So the question is on adoption of the amendment to this ordinance? By a roll call vote?
Hand vote for an amendment, but if...
Hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. It carries. All right. And so now, the question is on ordination of the ordinance as amended by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained.
Madam President, I move reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail, and it's properly seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right, it fails.
Item 27, ordinance, an ordinance that the city council adopt the following amendment to Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances, Article 4, Section 2-261, Veterans' Property Tax Workoff Program, as follows. Subsection 2-261-I-1 shall be deleted in its entirety to eliminate income limitations for applicants. In city council, December 12, 2022. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable. In city council, February 27, 2022. Passed with a third reading by a hand vote.
The question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained. Mr. Clerk?
Item 28, ordinance that the city council adopt the following amendment to Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances, Article 4, Section 2-260, Senior Citizen Property Tax Workoff Program, as follows. Subsection 2-260-H/1 shall be deleted in its entirety to eliminate income limitations for applicants. In city council, December 12, 2022. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable. In city council, February 27, 2022. Passed with a third reading by a hand vote.
Now the question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained.
29, ordinance that the city council adopt the following amendment to Chapter 3, Animals and Fowl, of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton, replacing the entirety of Chapter 3. In city council, December 27, 2022. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable. In city council, February 27, 2022. Passed with a third reading by a hand vote.
The question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please read the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained.
Item 31, ordinance, an ordinance amending Article 3, Division 2, Section 2-127, Pay Plan, inserting Conservation Commission Chair, Conservation Commission Member to the categories of pay plan positions and establishing a per-meeting flat rate. In city council, January 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable as amended. In city council, February 27, 2022. Passed with a third reading as amended by a hand vote.
The question is on ordination by a roll call vote.
Madam President?
Yes?
If the clerk could, what's the amendment to this order? Do you remember?
It added the parking...
Authority.
Authority to have the same stipend structure.
So the order itself will continue to state that it's just the Conservation Chair and Conservation Members without the parking? And how is that going to go in the books, in a sense? That's what I'm trying to...
It would include the parking. The ordinance committee voted to add that, so that added the amendment, came back to this council, with the amendment passed to the third reading. So the vote tonight would include the parking authority.
And it will be stated as such?
Yes, and they have the as amended version.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, final, his Conservation Commission Chair at $300 per meeting, Conservation Commission Member at $200 per meeting, PA 1 is the Parking Authority Chair at $300 per meeting, and PA 2 is a Parking Authority Member at $200 per meeting. All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
Question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The ordinance is ordained.
32, ordered that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the layout of Newbury Street extending from Spring Street northerly to Pleasant Street, a distance of 258 feet, more or less, and for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and layout as a public street or way of said City of Brockton. Said easement passing by or over lands of those persons known on Exhibit A, attached here too, and parties unknown. Said layout of said street being variable in width is shown more particularly on a plan entitled City of Brockton Layout and Acceptance Plan of Newbury Street. Said plan drawn by J.K. Homegren Engineering, Inc., at a scale of 1 inch to 20 feet, and dated August 19, 2022, is to be recorded herewith and made a part of this taking. Said layout of said street is bounded and described as follows, beginning at a point in the northerly line of Spring Street at its intersection with the westerly line of Newbury Street, then by meets and bounds to the point of beginning. The land taken is more fully described as follows. All the land within the limits of a private way known as Newbury Street, supposed to belong to parties unknown, being a strip of land variable in width extending from Spring Street northerly, a distance of 258 feet, more or less, as shown on a plan as mentioned at City of Brockton Layout and Acceptance. Said plan drawn by J.K. Homegren Engineering and dated August 19, 2022, is to be recorded herewith and made a part of this taking, and we have considered and estimated the damages sustained by all persons who have not waived damages in their several estates as follows. No awards. In city council, September 26, 2022. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Planning and Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 33, appointment of Martha Crowell of Oak Street, Brockton, Mass. to the planning board for a five-year term ending February 2028. In city council, February 13, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
Item 34, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows. Transfer of $90,000 from Human Resources Employee Benefits, $90,000; to Mayor Purchase of Services, $80,000; Mayor Goods and Supplies, $10,000. In city council, January 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 35, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby appropriated as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows. Appropriation of $815,802 from unappropriated estimated receipts, $815,802; to DPW Sewer Enterprise Purchase of Services, $815,802. In city council, January 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item number thirty-six, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars from DPW Water Decel Variable Costs, four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, to DPW Water Purchase of Services, four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. In city council, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item thirty-eight, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar from DPW Highway Snow Removal, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar, to Planning and Economic Development Purchase of Services, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar. In city council, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item thirty-seven, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar from DPW Highway Snow Removal, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar, to Planning and Economic Development Purchase of Services, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar. In city council, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item thirty-eight, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of two-hundred-thousand-dollar from DPW Highway Snow Removal, two-hundred-thousand-dollar, to Public Property Stadium Purchase of Services, two-hundred-thousand-dollar. In city council, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item thirty-eight, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of two-hundred-thousand-dollar from DPW Highway Snow Removal, two-hundred-thousand-dollar, to Public Property Stadium Purchase of Services, two-hundred-thousand-dollar. In city council, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Giacchino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item thirty-nine, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of seventy thousand dollars from Law Court Judgments, fifty thousand dollars, from Law Personal Services Other Than Overtime, twenty thousand dollars, to Law Purchase of Services, seventy thousand dollars. In city council, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance.